Recently hosted an academic conference to celebrate the 620th birthday of King Sejong the Great, who created the Korean alphabet known as Hangul. Educators said interest in learning Korean as a second language has spiked in the last few years among students. This event celebrated Korea's unique writing system.
Partly it's an expression of our scholarly commitment to the advancement of knowledge about Korea and the Korean language.
The City of Los Angeles Department of Public Works joined municipalities across North America to celebrate National Public Works Week, held each year in May. The event recognizes and highlights the important and outstanding work done by thousands of hard-working public works professionals. The theme this year is "Public Works Connects Us." L.A. has more than 5,000 employees in public works responsible for the construction, renovation, and operation of city facilities and infrastructure, as well as the delivery of public safety and environmental programs. Mayor Eric Garcetti kicked off the week by presenting a proclamation to public works recognizing the department's achievements. Wrapping up Bike Week, a grand opening ceremony of a new metro bike hub at the Hollywood-Vine Metro Red Line Station in Hollywood was held recently. The new 1,000-square-foot bicycle indoor parking facility will provide secure, controlled entry for 64 bicycles under closed-circuit TV surveillance, peak-hour staff availability, same-day repairs, bike accessory sales, and clinics. Officials say Hollywood and Vine will now have a safe, secure facility to help commuters and tourists combine bicycle and transit trips to and from Hollywood to avoid traffic and parking challenges.
This bicycle facility, when used with metro bike trains and buses, really does provide the first-mile-last-mile solution. Combined with metro bike share, you really have a comprehensive solution to get around in Los Angeles County.
Celebrate a historical figure in Los Angeles during Loomis Day festivities. If you love bread, here's something you can bite into. And move to the beat of a Cuban-American music festival. All this in this week's Things to Do. This weekend, you can enjoy some fun at the Loomis Day Festival. Loomis Day is named after Charles Fletcher Loomis, who was the first city editor of the Los Angeles Times and founded the Southwest Museum, or the first museum in L.A. This festival celebrates the art, history, and ethnic diversity in Los Angeles and is a cultural event that is community-oriented. It all takes place June 2nd through the 4th at various venues in L.A. For locations, visit LoomisDay.org/schedule. The Los Angeles Bread Festival is back. Get ready to carbo-load as Grand Central Market hosts the third annual Los Angeles Bread Festival on June 3rd and 4th. The free two-day event is a celebration of Southern California's artisanal bread renaissance and an invitation to the public to experience the many expressions of L.A. bread at its best. The centerpiece of the festival is a pop-up marketplace showcasing local bread bakers, as well as bread-centric workshops and demonstrations. Additional workshops led by guest bakers will cover artisan bread baking at home, beginning bread-making, pita, biscuits, and challah, plus community bread baking. It all takes place June 3rd through the 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Grand Central Market. For more, visit GrandCentralMarket.com. La Plaza de Cultura, in conjunction with Yambu Productions, present the Cuban-American Music Festival in keeping with La Plaza's mission of promoting Latin culture. The Cuban-American Music Festival will highlight traditional Cuban culture with music, art, dance, Cuban-inspired crafts, culinary delicacies, and cigar rollers. The festival will showcase top Cuban music acts to delight the senses. It all takes place on June 4th, from noon through 8:00 p.m. For more, visit CubanAmericanMusicFestival.net. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at L.A. this week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
There are heroes among us. They don't fly, or bend steel, or ride off into the sunset. They simply volunteer to look after someone else's health by providing comfort, lending a hand, or simply keeping us on track. Everyone's health needs a hero. Who will you look out for?
Find out how you can participate in improving our health.
Hi, I'm Gina Rae, and this is my dog Whippet. We're from Winnetka. Get it, girl. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. This is our city and our channel.
Good morning. If everybody would please find a seat. Today is Wednesday, May 31st, and I'd like to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Hall, and this is your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, and the public is welcome. Today is a very, very, very special day, but before we begin this celebration, why don't we take care of some business? Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomfield, Bonn, Buscaino, Sodio, Angler, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Carras, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rude, Weston, 12 members. President, a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business...
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Carras moves, and Mr. Weezer seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Harris, Dawson moves, and Mr. Englander seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, Department of Building and Safety recommends that council receive and file items 1C and 1O inasmuch as they are owner-occupied, single-family dwellings and thus exempt from lien processing. Further, the department recommends that items 1F, G, N, and T be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid in full. And lastly, that items 1P and 1W be continued to June 30th.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. Continue.
Items 1 through 19 are items noted for public hearing.
Do you have cards on any of these items?
Yes, sir. Cards on items 1 through 10 and 13.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote. And prepare to vote on the remaining items? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, before moving on, there's been a request from the city attorney, no less, to send item number 19 forthwith.
The city attorney, no less. All right, so without objection, that brings us where?
Items 20 through 31 are items which public hearings have been held.
Specials, Ms. Martinez.
Yeah. I want to call item 20 special for Mr. O'Farrell.
Let's hold 20. Any other? Then let's prepare to vote on these items, the remaining items. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
Items 32 through 49 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are before this body.
Mr. President, we do have cards on items 33 through 37 and 42 through 49.
Okay, let's hold those items and vote on what's left. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, items 50 through 55 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Krikorian. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Items 50, 51, and 52 are routine settlements that can be considered an open session unless members have questions or concerns. Items 53, 54, and 55 will need to be taken up in closed session.
So let's hold those three items. Mr. Clerk, if you would read 50, 51, and 52, we can take action on those items now.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, I do believe we have cards. Public hearing was not satisfied for those matters.
Okay, then we'll hold those items. Continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay, let's do this. Let me try to take care of some of the comment. Let's call up Mr. Previn. Where's Mr. Previn? Mr. Previn has items 1A, B, H, J, I, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, and 50, 51, and I think 52. Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, Council President Weston. What a beautiful presentation today. This is, this looks great. And I wanted to thank you for allowing us to speak on the closed-session items in advance, but if it's possible to hear what the settlements that you're proposing would be, and then we could make our comments, that would be fantastic. Those are the numbers in the 50s. In the interim, let me just simply say thank you for all the lighting districts. You've got seven of them in the 30s and 14 in the teens. But there's a lot of refunds on today's agenda, and, you know, it is an interesting question, and obviously people do overpay from time to time, but having looked in on the kind of backstory on these, there's very little information. So it worries us when we see that, for example, ExxonMobil is getting a substantial refund. When, at the beginning of the agenda, in the item 1 section, you have, I believe, W, that's like 22 pernicious liens, of which the largest council district, because they go across all of them, more or less, but Mr. Bonn takes the cake today with three. You, sir, though, get four, because you get credit for Mr. Fuentes, who's absent. So that's two from CD10 and two from CD7. So all of these liens amount to a painful reminder for people who have been attacked years ago, and we've got to change that if we can, sir. I know there's a lot of good challenges. We've got a lot of development happening and ways to put building and safety to good use, but this is not a good one. This is one that really does, frankly, upset us. Item number 27 caught my attention because we're taking a loan out and eating some interest to do sidewalk repair in Weezer's district. That's a little odd, given that we just approved those big settlements from the, you know, the Willets and so on and so forth. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. Item 29, we're re-upping the Avis deal, so thank you for that. And I just want to outline, because I'm sensing that you may not allow me to speak on the legal items after you make the settlements, there are three of them are from the LAPD. One of them is a secret litigation where there's actually no information. You're just considering the possibility of a litigation. Some of us worry that it may be directed towards us, but many of us are concerned about other things. And then finally, there is a big litigation at item 55 for the power transfer. This is a timeless classic here at City Hall where the $200, $300 million in power gets shoved into the general fund, and people object and file lawsuits, and we pay for both sides of that, obviously, one way or the other. And so with that, sir, I will veer into, oh, I wanted to say that 48, appreciate it, you're coming after, you put a reward up for a series of bank robberies. That's, we need more information to be helpful, but the other question is, it's costing us $1,800 to buy an ad at the L.A. Times. I was wondering, could the banks themselves who've been robbed possibly contribute to any of that? Because I must say, we have financial difficulties down here, as you know. We've had to ease off on all of the asks for employees and so on and so forth, so to be constantly buying L.A. Times ads for rewards for things that are murky, I don't know. Maybe you could give us some more information, we could go from there.
Let's, okay, thank you. Let's give Mr. Previn his one-minute general public comment.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you to Mr. Buscaino, item 31. He's re-upping with Granicus. Now, this is the company that makes these telecasts visible. Today, on LGBTQ Day, I want to ask all of our cherished partners and friends today to notice when they watch the telecast, to see whether or not the public appears the same size as the council member and the staff. They don't. We appear the size of, unfortunately, hashtag Bloomfield knows, whereas you appear, obviously, in living color, which we adore, because you look fantastic. But the point is, couldn't we all appear the same? That would be the request. That's Council Rule 93, sir. I know Mr. O'Farrell knows about it, and I want to just say to Mr. O'Farrell personally and with the highest regard, if he could simply return the contributions that were found by the Ethics Commission to be in excess from Mr. Ma, I believe it's Masiborsky, I don't know the guy, but he has multiple LLCs, when you, it would be okay to give it back to him quickly, because he was fined $17,000 by the Ethics Commission. I think all of us would appreciate that, and thanks to Mr. O'Farrell and everybody for having such a wonderful celebration today, and cheers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Richard, Mr. Richard Eastman, Richard? Let's give him his one minute for public comment.
Distinguished city council, gay and lesbians, and all the people of America, my name is Richard Eastman, a man living with AIDS for almost 25 years, one of the founders of medical marijuana, and today I was on the phone with the National Park Service because for the last nine years, I produced the oldest marijuana civil rights demonstration in America, the smoking at the White House, high noon, Lafayette Park, with a march to the Lincoln Memorial, and we're going to have the world's largest peace sign, and we're going to try to help Yoko Ono and give peace a chance, and end hunger and homelessness, and find a cure for AIDS. I've come before this council many years, when I worked with Tom Bradley in the L.A. Hollywood Sign Project many years, in Hollywood, Western costume, and almost dying in 1994, fighting for a little plant called marijuana, medical marijuana. I'm just reminding you all that it's beyond gay and lesbian civil rights, it's about human rights for a plant that heals and saves so many people. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Richard. Let's take up Mr. Walsh's, John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, let me see on my screen his cards. Mr. Walsh, you have 1A, B, C, D, E, and F, G, H, I. You have 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 13, 39, 40, 41.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or @JWalshConfidential, and tweeting @HollywoodDems. And again, on number one, building and safety, I have nothing but praise for building and safety. They do a good job. I'm not one of those white guys who go, "Oh, I'm a bunch of crooks! I'm a bunch of croo!" When you do a good job, I point out that you do a good job, and I think it is a waste of bunting and time as you kiss one another's ass. Well, the first two hours of every meeting is the city council kissing one another's ass, and the cameras love to watch the city council kiss one another's ass. What is all this crap doing here? And now we have music. What about, what are we going to have?
Stay on the items, Mr....
And then number 39, and all these people here came for the celebration, so they're all in favor of this mutual masturbation that's going on here.
Stay on the items, Mr. Walsh.
Number 39, this is, quality air mitigation facilities, and local declaration of local emergency by the mayor. Isn't that important? Number 39, this mayor has declared an emergency. Do these cameras give a shit?
Mr. President, we've already voted on item 39.
I'm speaking on number 39.
He just said we've already voted on that, so go to one of your other items, Mr. Walsh.
Okay, so you didn't even talk about it. But the mayor has, the city is under emergency orders. General obligation bonds? The city is bankrupt. I just want to say to my great-grandfather's birthplace, Switzerland, if you come here, you're crazy.
Mr. Walsh, stay on the subject.
Number 39, number 41? That's what, and number 13? Is it okay to skip around, or are you not allowed to skip around? 13, this is the street lighting. Again, once you got rid of the carbon arcs here, the street lighting improved. You're doing a good job, and I want to know how much this guy with the organ is getting paid.
Mr. Walsh, stay on the subject.
Okay, you can take the extra 14 seconds, pack it up, and you know where you can shove it.
Let's give him his one minute.
I want to get my one minute. I get my one minute where I'm, ladies and gentlemen, on May 12th, the Friday meeting, at approximately 10:20, the fire alarm went off here. Go watch it. This building was evacuated after 10 minutes. You sat there with your, this isn't Herb. Herb wasn't here that day. It was Nuri. You have no plan for evacuation. First grade, first day, the teacher taught us how to fire drill. Here, there is no, and I just want you people with the cameras to realize, you are in a fire trap. The story was kept out of the L.A. Times. It's not there. But the people who are here know this place is a fire trap, and it was a huge fire started in a microwave, and no one gives a syphilitic rat's ass whether you live or die up here. Hollywood Highlands.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. I said earlier that today is a very important day for the city of Los Angeles. Sitting up here with my dear friend Phil Wilson, reminiscing, and both of us are saying that when we first met 30 years ago, who would have thunk that we would be celebrating such a important group of people that have helped made this city and this state and this country just so great, where none of us would want to go live anywhere else? I think now it's time for us to let you know how much we appreciate you. So we have presentations today led by our own Mitch O'Farrell and Mike Bonin. We're gonna begin, we're gonna have a procession led by our great mayor, our city attorney, and our controller. So if we could begin, maestro, music, please.
This land is your land, this land is my land. From California to New York Island, from the redwood forest to the Gulf Stream waters. This land was made for you and me. As I was walking down the highway, I saw above me that it is silent.
I saw below me that golden valley.
This land was made for you and me. I'm only rambling, and while my footsteps kept, the sun we held out, prime time and desert, and on the road me, a voice was sung. This land was made for you and me. When the sun was shining, as I was strolling, and the wheat fields waving, and the dust was falling, as the voice was chanting through the misty fog. This land was made for you and me. As I was walking, I saw a sign there, and on that sign it said, "No trespassing." But on the other side, it didn't say nothing. This land was made for you and me. Nobody living can ever stop me. As I go walking that freedom highway, nobody living can ever beat me. This land was made for you and me. This land is your land, this land is my land. From California to New York Island, from the redwood forest to the Gulf Stream waters. This land was made for you and me.
I also want to give a shout out to Dan Halden of my staff at Piano. Good morning and welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. Brothers, sisters, allies in equality, this land is our land. The Celebration Theater has been dedicated to telling stories of the LGBT community since 1982. Their original works continue to influence theaters across Los Angeles and the entire country. This morning's production was directed by Daniel Henning of the Blank Theater in Hollywood. Big round of applause for Daniel. Thank you, Council President Wesson, and colleagues, for the opportunity to shine the spotlight on leaders and legends in the LGBT community here in Los Angeles. Today's theme, "The Art of Resistance," has special meaning at a time when we have a U.S. president that openly admires authoritarian leaders across the globe and exhibits an alarming level of ignorance of history related to human rights, civil rights, First Amendment rights, reproductive rights, and the founding principles that are at the very cornerstone of our Constitution. Our honorees speak up and speak out, and we are proud to recognize them today. Sara is a Tony Award-winning singer, actor, and activist. Sara recently spoke her truth as bisexual and immigrant and a woman of color during last year's 40 to None Summit. Michael is a groundbreaking playwright and actor. Michael is one of Hollywood's first openly gay actors, legendary for his work on stage and screen, as well as for his activism in our community. In 2005, Alexandra became the first openly transgender woman to play a transgender character on television in Romeo and Michelle: The Beginning. Since then, she's had roles in countless productions, including Amazon's Transparent. One of the original protesters of the watershed Black Cat demonstration in 1967, which galvanized the gay rights movement in Los Angeles and set the stage for the LGBT rights movement across the United States, two and a half years before Stonewall. Alexi and other pioneers in the movement risked their jobs, their relationships with family, and their public life just to take an open stand following an undercover police operation at the Black Cat Tavern in Silverlake on New Year's Eve, 1966. Ladies and gentlemen, these four distinguished individuals are the definition of the art of resistance and our 2017 LGBT Heritage Month honorees. One more round of applause, please. Our colleague, Mike Bonin, and I want to welcome Mayor Garcetti, City Attorney Mike Fuhr, Los Angeles Police Department Assistant Chief Beatrice Girmalla, and our partner in every Heritage Month, the Department of Cultural Affairs, and General Manager Danielle Colleagues, we are also honored to stand with City Controller Ron Galperin to present four individuals who are living their truth and blazing a trail for others to experience full equality in the LGBT community. These pioneers demonstrate that we can all live honestly, openly, and authentically. During a special breakfast reception earlier this morning in the rotunda, individuals from each council district were also recognized for their contributions to LGBT rights and equality. Please give them all a round of applause. Los Angeles is an exceptional city that welcomes and celebrates its diverse population. The LGBT community has contributed significantly with its remarkable leaders, social activists, and cultural visionaries, who have made their mark on the history of our city. We are a city of compassion and inclusion. We are a city that, no matter who you are, where you're from, what language you speak, you are encouraged to reach your full potential and work toward a better life for yourself and your family. That value is part of our city, part of our DNA. This year, in an era of uncertainty and anxiety, gay pride organizers will bring a march back to Hollywood where it all started in 1970. I hope you will join all of us at Hollywood and Highland in the 13th District on June 11th to show the world we are resolute in our resistance toward hatred, discrimination, authoritarianism, and intolerance. It will be a chance to march in celebration of equality, acceptance, and love. That is the true Los Angeles, and that is the true spirit of our nation. Now, please help me welcome my co-presenter this morning, Councilmember Mike Bonin.
Thank you, Mitch, for the intro and for putting this together. Since we've took office a few years ago, Mr. O'Farrell and I sort of trade off in the organizing of this, and I'm chagrined, but very happy to say, this is the best year yet. This is the best year yet. We will come back next year. The musical performance that started this, rising out of the audience, was really, really beautiful and brilliant. This is the seventh annual LGBT Heritage Month. It is not the seventh time that a council member stood at this podium to do a pride celebration in this council. For the first few years, this was a pride celebration that Mr. Rosendahl organized as the only LGBT elected in the city, and it took a few years before it became a full Heritage Month. And it is vitally important that it be a full Heritage Month, because these Heritage Months that we celebrate here in Los Angeles in these chambers have two purposes. One is outward-facing, which is to tell others, not of that community, about the traditions and the strength and the inspiring stories of a community. And it's also inward-facing. It's a celebration of pride. It's a reminder to ourselves in that community of who we are. But for the LGBT community, that second part, that inward-facing part of the Heritage Month celebration is even more vitally important, because we do not pass down our history, our tradition, our stories, our heritage in the same way that others do. Because very few gay children have gay parents, we do not have the Passover tradition, where we gather together every year and share a story of thousands of years of what our community has done and how our community has struggled and how our community has survived. We don't gather beside a Christmas tree and, and hear stories of the generations that came before and what they did and how they built the life that we lead today. So our young generations don't have the benefit of that built-in heritage being passed on. So young people today may not know that one of the brightest times worldwide in LGBT history preceded one of the darkest, in pre-World War II Germany. There are young people today who don't know of the horrors and the ravages of the AIDS epidemic, or how the lesbian community banded together to save their sick and dying brothers. We, we don't have a built-in mechanism to, to tell each other about the Black Cat, or about Stonewall, or about Matthew Shepard, or about Elaine Noble. We all know Harvey Milk. The first LGBT elected official in the United States was Elaine Noble, a lesbian state legislator from Massachusetts, who gets too often lost to history. We don't pass on those stories. And one of the things that's particularly unique to the LGBT community is we have a built-in invisibility. Unless we proactively say, against the presumption of society that we are straight, that we are LGBT or Q, people assume that we are straight. So in the, in the dichotomy we all face between acquiescence, or activism, or impatience, and, and, and being invisible, it's a harder burden for us to make that choice. It's, it's a more courageous, deliberate action. And the LGBT community has been all over the place with victories and defeats for the past decade. You know, folks were pushed from acquiescence into activism by Prop 8. Folks were pushed into celebrating themselves by the Supreme Court decision about marriage. And folks have been pushed back into activism and angry protest because of what's happening in states like North Carolina, what's happening in places like Chechnya, and what's happening in Washington, DC every single day. We are really faced with a, a crisis and a choice between that acceptance and that acquiescence versus the activism, between incrementalism and between an impatient insistence on change and standing up and protest and resistance. Right now, Mitchell talked about it so well, you know, we are facing in this country not just an assault against the LGBT community, as we are in various places, but an existential threat to this country, to democracy, to the rule of law, to having a just society, to, to civil rights and to civil liberties. And let today be a day for the LGBT community to acknowledge and stand up and say, we are in this struggle not just for ourselves, but for everyone and with everyone. Because there's an undeniable truth, is that the people who are making discriminatory rules about bathrooms against our transgender sister and brothers are the same people who are denying science and climate change and pulling out of, of the Kyoto protocols. They are the same people. The, the people who are objecting to the Employment Nondiscrimination Act are the same people approving Trump Care and stripping millions of people of health care and consigning them to illness and possible death. The same people who have opposed marriage equality are the same people who are opposing comprehensive, compassionate immigration reform. The same people who propose reparative therapy for struggling LGBT youth coming out of the closet, they are the same people who deny racism and who oppose criminal justice reform. The same people who wanted sodomy laws and who can't get the hell out of our bedrooms are the same people who can't get the hell out of a woman's uterus and are standing up and objecting to reproductive rights. The, the same people who oppose anti-bullying legislation in our schools, they're the same people who oppose all the sensible gun control laws that we need in this country. And the people who are finding bully pulpits on the internet, or in Congress, or in the Oval Office to preach hate and intolerance are the same people who are leaving people in poverty, who are trying to kill unions, who are trying to kill the programs like CalFresh, who are objecting to the minimum wage. It is the absolute same thing, and there's a mutual struggle that we, as the LGBT community, need to be a part of. As a community, the LGBT community, our existence is threatened in parts of the world. People are literally being killed, and our dignity and our civil rights are being threatened in places around this country. Our existence depends on our resistance, and that resistance must be collective and it must be joint, and it must be not just about us, but about everybody. So let's that, make that the message of, of Heritage Month today. It takes a lot of voices to make that resistance happen. It takes folks marching in the streets, you know, the folks act-up activists, and it It takes folks marching in the streets, you know, folks ACT UP activists, and it takes folks who have chained themselves to the White House gates to make sure that Don't Ask, Don't Tell get repealed. And it also takes smart, eloquent, passionate, sensible voices in elective office. And in Los Angeles, we are very lucky to be led by Mayor Eric Garcetti, who was a friend of the LGBT community long ago, all his life. I'm blessed that the mayor married me. Well, he married me and Sean. But the mayor is also one of those voices of resistance, not just locally, but on the national stage. So let me welcome and thank Mayor Eric Garcetti.
Thank you. Listening to Councilmember Bonin's eloquence, you can see why I wanted to marry him. He is an incredible person. Wow. To Mike and to Mitch, thank you both for your eloquence, for your incredible, I mean, I think you basically, this turned from a Heritage Month commemoration into a political rally, and show me the way, Mike, because I'm ready to go. This is a tough time we live in, but don't cede the power you have before you exercise it, and don't give away the joy you have before you feel it. Too often, people are doing that each and every day. Today's latest news that we're pulling out of the Paris Climate Accords, I think one of three countries joining Syria, somebody pointed out even North Korea signed it, but we're pulling out of it today. Well, ladies and gentlemen, Mike and I have already talked about it, we're going to adopt those standards right here in Los Angeles, because we have the power to do so. When an administration repeals protections for transgendered brothers and sisters, we show by moving forward, the first big city in America to have a trans advisory council, and you look at our bathrooms, you look at our openings, we will continue to lead and to flex our muscles, to show our power, and to feel our joy too. Because if we can't have a good time while we're doing it, what's the point? When we go out and we, you know, love New York City, but when we have to remind them that it started here first, before Stonewall, and Alexi takes to the ramparts one of my political heroes and dear friends, and he tells us that history of what it was like, and we see LAPD Deputy Chiefs, Assistant Chiefs standing with the activists instead of LAPD officers going after folks expressing love. You see what happens when we express that power. And Mike said it so eloquently, there are too many stories that have been lost, that we don't know, that were right here in Los Angeles, of people who dealt with hate, who lived in the closet, people who were killed because of who they were. We remember some of the amazing stories as we look at the Olympics coming back to Los Angeles. We remember 1932, a Polish emigre, Stella Walsh, who, after she won a gold medal here in the sprints, and after she died, it only came out then that she was intersex, a trans member, an intersex person, who the Olympics couldn't figure out where to fit her, and so now they don't do gender tests in the International Olympic Movement because of what we learned later. We know that the history and the stories, when I came here, we had had the great work of Jackie Goldberg, the first open lesbian on this council, and she was quickly joined by Joel Wax, who came out here on this council. So it's a very safe space to anybody considering a big announcement. And yet there was no, when I came onboard and when Joel Wax left, there was no for a number of years LGBT member of this council. And to see a city comptroller and two powerful council members, and to see more importantly not just us with honorable in front of our names, but these folks, the actual people we serve here, leading us to continue pushing forward, that's what we celebrate here. I often say that these Heritage Months aren't just to mark history, they are to make history. And history calls on us right now to make history, to stand up, to be heard, to fight back, yes to resist, yes to persist, but also to assist one another, because we need to be less focused on the folks that want us to be focused on them and create chaos and anarchy out of the White House, and more focused on ourselves and our communities, and the power we can exercise to help somebody on the streets today, where we learned that homelessness is up 20% on the streets of Los Angeles, and you go to Hollywood today, there are LGBT youth who need us, who have emancipated from foster care or run away from another state and are sleeping on the sidewalk with crumpled-up newspapers as their pillow tonight. Let us make history, not just mark history. Let us celebrate each other, and let us know that all of us have a stake in this fight for equality. I'll close, I came of age politically when I was in college, working with ACT UP in New York during that AIDS crisis, and my cousin Jimmy Hester, who was one of the first openly gay people I knew, Latino, open, from, you know, the moment I was born, he died of AIDS in that first round of deaths, and it was to me the moment when I realized that if we stand by, we don't just lose our loved ones, we lose our souls. So let us not lose our minds right now, let us not lose our souls, let's remember who we are, we are strong, we are mighty, and to each of the four folks that we are celebrating, thank you for blazing the pathway that allows us to have the honor to continue the fight together.
Thank you Mayor Garcetti. Ladies and gentlemen, our first openly gay citywide elected official, Los Angeles Comptroller,
Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much to the council president, to councilmembers O'Farrell and Bonin for putting this incredible morning together. I consider myself to be so fortunate to be part of a city government that everybody here is an advocate and a believer in the rights of everybody, no matter where they come from, no matter who they love, and what an amazing morning this is. You know, I think about the fact that we're celebrating the arts as part of LGBT Heritage Month right now, and, you know, being a lawyer, I always used to sort of argue for LGBT inclusion based on logical arguments. And what the arts are about is a way to completely bypass sometimes the brain, reach the hearts and the souls of people, and that's why we're celebrating this. Artists have played an incredible role in movements of social justice around the world, from the Campaign Against Apartheid in South Africa, and of course, efforts by LGBTQ Americans to gain equality under the law, and of course, we've got still a long way to go when you look at what's happening in Washington as well as throughout the world. And as we are troubled by all that, we have to resist, but we have to do actually much more than resist. Because today we have marriage equality not only in California but across the nation, because after Prop 8 happened, we didn't give up in the face of setbacks, we persisted. And many of our gains have come about not simply because of our activism as a community, but because we've worked alongside allies, allies in the faith community, advocates for racial equality, and we have assisted, and they have assisted us. And when some told us to settle for civil unions or water down workplace protections, we kept on fighting for full equality because we insisted. And it's important that we lend our voice to protest marches, not just for LGBT causes, but for so many of the other important causes that are out there, and we must enlist and be enlisted. And finally, perhaps most importantly, we've got to connect with one another. When you look at so much of what's happening in our national discourse or lack thereof, it's because we don't have bridges between people, so we must also coexist. I'll close by saying that I remember now, almost four years ago, the day that I was so fortunate, so blessed to be inaugurated into the role of comptroller. And we were walking down the steps of City Hall, and I was hand-in-hand with my husband, along with, hand-in-hand were Mike Bonin and also Mitch O'Farrell with their spouses. And it was such a powerful moment, I hadn't even really thought about what the import of that moment was, I hadn't really considered even the fact that we were going to hold hands, it was just sort of natural, and yet it turned out to be one of the most powerful moments of my life. And to see so much of the city's leadership and to see us embraced in that way was a moment that I will never forget. And what I want to see is that everybody in this city, everybody in this nation, and everybody throughout the world will come to really embrace the LGBTQ community and all the great heritage that it has, and all the great gifts that it bears. So thank you so much for being a part of this and for welcoming all us to this.
When Mitch started introducing Ron and said our citywide LGBT elected official, I almost thought he was going to introduce Mike for a second. And given the level of commitment and advocacy that Mike has given over the years to the LGBT community, that wouldn't have been a mistake. You know, I noted that we can't just be for ourselves, but we also can't get anything done by ourselves, and we need allies. And I first got to know Mike when he was on the council and I was a staffer hanging around the columns. And if there was going to be a piece of LGBT legislation introduced on the floor, you could flip a coin, was it going to be Jackie Goldberg or was it going to be Mike Fuhr? Mike isn't just an ally who presses the button for you, he does the work and he fights and he proposes things, and he's on the front line, so it's an honor to introduce Mike
Mike, thank you very, very much. And Mitch, Mike, Ron, this is a marvelous celebration. Congratulations to Sarah and Michael and Alexi and Alexandra. Your talent, your determination, your activism, your voice inspire all of us here today. So I was reflecting, listening to the previous speakers, on the fact that I'm the oldest brother in our family. My two younger brothers, one of whom, as you know, passed away last year, were gay growing up, wondering, I think, with whom they could talk, wondering who would be a role model for them. And there were precious few people to whom they could look up, and it must have felt so isolating and so distancing from their friends. That anguish is felt less today, because there are role models from whom you have just heard, standing before us, for kids who are growing up throughout our city and throughout our nation. That's in many ways one of the key takeaways from this celebration today, is that the next generation of kids will grow up in a very different America than my brothers did. But having said that, this America today is confronting major challenges. You know, last year when we were here, the Pulse nightclub shooting had yet to happen. Things are different now. Hate crimes are up since the beginning of the year. Hate speech pervades our nation. Previous speakers alluded to Chechnya, let's be very explicit about it, gay men are being rounded up and tortured and killed in Chechnya right now, only because of their sexual orientation. This is the world that we are confronting now. Now, Mitch alluded to the fact that on June 11th, there will be a different approach taken to Pride Month. In lieu of the parade that traditionally has gone through the streets of West Hollywood, there will be voices raised and commitments made, determination expressed, values emblazoned on the streets of our city, starting in Hollywood and Highland. I'm going to be there, I know the members of the LGBTQ Association in my office will be there, and I think the focus, as Mike Bonin has said so eloquently, is going to be on LGBTQ rights, to be sure, but also on social justice and equal rights for everybody. We celebrate those values today. Thank you so much for bringing this celebration forward, and congratulations again to our marvelous
Thank you, Mike Fuhr. We have another ally in the LGBT community, make no mistake about it, the Los Angeles Police Department has come so far in the last 50 years. No one represents that new way of thinking, standing in solidarity with the LGBT community. None other to represent that value to its fullest is our Assistant Chief of Police,
Good morning, I will keep my thoughts brief. I have the privilege of standing here before you as the LAPD's LGBTQ liaison because of our Chief of Police, Charlie Beck. So I want to make that very clear to everybody here, and the commitment of the department to all matters, all policy involving and impacting the LGBTQ community. I have the honor to be here today because of some very special people that have taught me much, educated the department much, opened our eyes, and have pushed us forward in our momentum to create an even more unified city of Los Angeles. And those are the members of the LAPD LGBTQ Working Group, over 40 strong, with many representatives here today, and I would like to ask them if they could please stand and The reason I have two very exciting announcements to make is because of the working group that you've seen just here beside me. One of them is called the Safe Place Initiative. Many of you may be familiar with that program. It was born in Seattle, Washington, a police officer, forward-thinking, went ahead and said, "I think I need to better this community, I need to provide safe place and refuge for members of the LGBTQ community who may be harassed, bullied, intimidated, the victim of a potential hate crime or hate incident on the streets of Seattle, and let's get businesses and the private sector involved." And that's what he did. And we are so proud to take the Safe Place Initiative from Seattle, Washington, and bring it here to Los Angeles, and we are very, very pleased that we were able to announce that today. The LAPD will be piloting the Safe Place Initiative with the help of these decals, which will be placed in the front doors and glass windows of participating businesses and organizations in the Hollywood and Northeast area, Northeast being Silver Lake and Atwater Village. We're hoping to take this initiative citywide, and it's a voluntary program which invites businesses and organizations to open their doors and their hearts to members of the LGBTQ community if there is some crisis and they are in need, and help them and assist them in contacting law enforcement or any organization that they deem appropriate for their exigency and their concern at the time. So we're very glad to announce that program here, and we hope to take it to 21 areas within the LAPD. The other very important initiative here is the LGBTQ Safety and Resource List. This is the first real comprehensive guide to legal, health, housing issues within the LGBTQ community, adults, youth, and our seniors. This was the dream and the brainchild of Terry J. Terry, could you please stand up and be acknowledged for this? Terry brought this to the working group. Through generous donations of talent and time and effort, we were able to publish these at no expense to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you Charles Puri and Hollywood Hills West Neighborhood Council. We also will be distributing these to the 21 geographic areas of LAPD, so as they encounter members of the community that may need this resource, they will So, as they encounter members of the community that may need this resource, they will be able to hand it out. It will also be available in City of Los Angeles locations. And any community member here that would like some, please reach out to me, 213-486-6000, and we'll make sure we get these to you. And when Chief Beck saw this and reviewed this pamphlet, he asked us to make it into an app. And it is available on Google Play and on Android and coming soon, in the next couple of weeks. We hope to get that on Apple as well. All of those resources, as you see here, within this brochure, will be available to all, and please share it with others as well. Thank you for your time today. Thank you, council members, for your support.
Thank you, Assistant Chief of Police Bea Girmala. Okay, are you all ready for Sara Ramirez? Yeah? All right. Okay, Sara Ramirez is a Mexican-Irish-American, Tony Award-winning actress, singer, songwriter, producer, and LGBTQ advocate and activist. I can refer to you as my Irish sister now. She first appeared on Broadway in Paul Simon's Broadway musical, The Cape Man, The Gershwin's Fascinating Rhythm, A Class Act, and then Monty Python's Spamalot, for which she won the Tony Award for Best Performance by a Featured Actress in a Musical and the Outer Critics Circle Award for Outstanding Featured Actress in a Musical. While she has many television credits, most viewers know Sara from her run of over a decade as orthopedic surgeon Dr. Callie Torres on ABC's top-rated television drama, Grey's Anatomy. Yeah. As an activist, Sara was awarded the Ally for Equality Award by the Human Rights Campaign Foundation in 2015. And the following year, Sara came out publicly as bisexual at the 40-to-none Summit organized by True Colors Fund in Los Angeles, California. Sara was selected as an Honoree for LGBT Heritage Month in celebration of her outstanding artistic endeavors and advocacy on behalf of the LGBTQ community. Ladies and gentlemen, we give you Sara Ramirez.
One of my first and most memorable trips to Los Angeles was when I was 15 years old, several years before I would come out to myself, my family, and my chosen family and my friends. My friend and I insisted that her mother drive us up from San Diego to see Patty Lepone. Yeah, oh yeah. In her farewell one-woman show in Westwood, she was off to London to star in Sunset Boulevard. And I was convinced this was my only shot at meeting her, so I waited at the stage door with my little note in hand. And then she came out and she took my note and I lost my mind, lost my mind. And little did I know how much more I would get to experience in this beautiful, beautiful city of Los Angeles. Thank you, City of Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs for organizing today's events. My deepest gratitude to the Los Angeles City Council, Mayor Garcetti, Controller Galperin, and Council Members Bonin and O'Farrell for this honor. I must admit that today feels intense in complex ways and deeply, deeply meaningful given our current political climate. So many people are losing hope, so many people are losing hope or have lost hope, not just in LA or the US, but around the world. It's gay and bisexual men in Chechnya. So, you know, it's really, it's hard to maintain hope some days. And so, sharing space in a way that celebrates my community and all its intersections gives me hope. And I'm so proud to be a Mexican-Irish-American immigrant queer bisexual woman. And so, so thank you. Thank you for inviting me to participate in this beautiful celebration of our community's rich heritage. The lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer-plus communities committed stand for equal rights has never been and is not just about one person, one lived experience, or one identity. Our struggles are shared and our resilience unrelenting. There are so many incredible trailblazers that I'm thankful for within our community here in Los Angeles, including the iconic pioneers I can't even believe I'm being honored with here today, Alexandra Michael, Alexi. And while they were on the East Coast, I must acknowledge the mothers of our LGBTQ rights movement, Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera. They were two fierce transgender women of color who paved the way for so many to be their most authentic selves. They certainly impacted me, so thank you, Marsha and Sylvia. I am eternally grateful to our LGBTQ plus elders and activists here in the city who, for decades, disrupted and demonstrated, sacrificed, mobilized, and litigated in the face of fear and violence. I am so grateful to the legacy of the bisexual and transgender communities' work in the City of Los Angeles, who have been and are angels to so many in our most marginalized and ignored communities. That legacy is rich and complex and will continue through folks like Bambi Salcedo, who's right here, Genesee Gutierrez, who I love and adore, Dr. Mimi Huang, Ph.D., Ms. Hazel Jade, RJ Aguirre, Nicole Crystal, Denise Penn, Gary North, Mike Zemansky, Faith Cheltenham, to name a few. And while there's still so much work ahead of us, I know that hope and faith and love are what we need to fuel us and keep us going. And so, now I will leave you with a quote from last year's honoree, George Takei. "We should indeed stay calm, keep calm in the face of difference, and live our lives in a state of inclusion and wonder at the diversity of humanity." Thank you.
I have the privilege and the honor of introducing Michael Kearns. And he has been just an amazing talent and amazingly fierce advocate for years. You know, when I look back at all the things that he's done over the years, one of the things that's been very interesting to me is in 1992, he was honored by the Mayor of St. Louis, and it was designated Michael Kearns Day. And that was in honor of his many accomplishments as an openly gay and HIV-positive actor, writer, producer, and activist. I actually lived in St. Louis for quite a number of years. I went to college there. You didn't know that? You have this look on your face, like, "Really? Oh, my gosh." And when I did that, I could not have imagined, when I was a student then in St. Louis, that there would come to be a Michael Kearns Day in Missouri. But it's a great testament to his ability to help break down stigmas, to be a trailblazer in so many ways. When he came out in the mid-1970s, the idea of being an openly gay Hollywood actor was unheard of. A decade and a half later, as AIDS continued to ravage the community, Michael revealed on Entertainment Tonight that he was HIV-positive, which was an incredibly brave thing to do. And on ABC's Life Goes On, he played a character who had the virus. Michael played Cleve Jones in HBO's adaptation of Randy Shilts and the band Played On. And that was such an incredibly powerful role, I remember it very well. And his activism and his art are deeply intertwined. Our City Department of Cultural Affairs awarded Michael a Cola Fellowship to create a new theatrical work, Make Love Not War, that premiered in 2005 at Barnstall Art Park. It's a reminder, by the way, of the great influence that the city has in helping to create great art. The play drew from the diverse experiences of people affected by the Gulf War. He also produced two solo theater pieces in which he portrays a dozen culturally diverse people living with HIV and with AIDS. Michael embodies art as an expression, expression of who we are, who we strive to be. His work is intensely personal and it's also intensely universal at the same time. His uncommon courage helped pave the way for so many other openly gay and lesbian and bisexual and transgender actors and actresses, that in many ways, an actor coming out is no longer a big story. We must remember that it was not always so. And today, we recognize Michael Kearns' role in bringing us where we are today and our responsibility to honor his work by moving forward with pride and determination. Congratulations, Michael!
When I heard that I was being honored as a trailblazer, I thought, "Finally!" After all those overheated afternoons in Griffith Park throughout the '70s, traversing path upon path, slinking behind bushes, lurking under the trees, I'm finally being Do not forget that it is the sexual revolution that defined us. From that kiss at the Black Cat to the outlaws of Stonewall, our heat was initially ignited through the power of our sweaty bodies and libidos all aflame. But that bonfire of brotherhood, we had yet to acknowledge lesbians except as punchlines, was quickly doused during the last decades of the 20th century, when day sweats turned into night sweats. And in spite of our compassion in attending to the bodies of those afire with the plague, we were no longer hot news. Rather, we were relegated to that which needed to be put out, put down, put away, extinguished, virtually burnt at the stake. Divisions took hold, resulting in a perilous state of disaster. And weren't we complicit in creating this us-versus-them mindset? The sick, the healthy, the white, the non-white, rich, poor, beautiful, not-so-much. As AIDS, HIV decimated our community, the word on the street was that even though we deserved it, we were heroic in our bedside manner as long as we focused on ourselves. Not the trans community, not the prison community, not the leather community, those pigs, not the immigrant community, not communities of color, not the bisexual community, not communities below the poverty line, and certainly not the multitudinous communities of women, except for those who wore white uniforms and could administer the final doses of morphine. But hey, we must have been doing something right, because by the onset of the 21st century, we were breaking to get into marriage licenses and meeting ourselves coming and going on preschool parking lots. We came a long way, baby. We achieved equality. Swimming in the mainstream without even striking a match, we had arrived. These trails were ablaze with clegg lights, darling. There are even openly gay actors in Hollywood, oh my! You want to know something about identity politics? The LGBTQ community put the "I" in identity. We put the "P" in... Wait, I can't read this. Oh, I'm old. We put the "P" in privilege. That's what we did, just in time to put Hillary in the White House. Oh, what am I saying? Darn. What were we thinking? You know, I'm not sure we gave much thought to the number of LGBTQ immigrants who face a certain death if they are deported. I'm not sure we gave much thought to the number of lesbians and other women, our sisters, aunts, daughters, nieces, neighbors, mothers, coworkers, whose rights are being ripped from their bodies like a faux leopard jacket. I'm not sure we gave much thought to the LGBTQ men and women who return from the battlefield forced into a new war zone in order to get health care they so urgently deserve. Did we give any thought to the homeless population in Los Angeles, which includes thousands of LGBT people? Are they allowed to celebrate pride? And did we give any thought to our queer, black, and brown brothers and our queer, black, and brown sisters who are being disproportionately targeted for a life of predestined incarceration? Just because you don't attend the same cocktail parties with some of these peeps, that doesn't mean they aren't part of the community. They are no less LGBTQ than you are. Okay, so you learned to avoid saying tranny. And you wrote a check to Planned Parenthood. Yeah, 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 yeah. Just because you gave all your relatives a frank Ocean CD for Christmas doesn't mean you're not a racist. I don't care if you call it resist or pride, it's time to channel your inner anarchist... Ah, I'm sorry. I meant archaeologist. Each of us needs to find a trail to blaze. Find the light within and aim it into some neighborhoods you've never been into. Shine your light on paths untraveled and neglected. Dare to ruin a pair of shoes, okay? I take this acknowledgement very seriously. Thank you, Mayor Garcetti, Council Member O'Farrell, et cetera. I consider today's acknowledgement a map, a blueprint for future expeditions. This award serves as my marching papers. Thank you.
Amen, Michael. Amen. Our next honoree is Alexandra Billings. Alexandra, could you come on up? Alexandra is a bit of a Renaissance woman. She is an actress, a teacher, and a singer. She is the second openly transgender performer to have played a transgender character on television, which she did in the 2005... Yeah, there we go. In the 2005 made-for-TV movie, Romeo and Michelle: In the Beginning. A former resident of Hollywood, she now lives in Long Beach with her wife, Chrissiane. Is Chrissiane... She's here somewhere. They were married in a commitment ceremony in Chicago in December of 1995. She is best known for her role as Davina in the Amazon series Transparent. She has played transgender characters in episodes of Karen Sisko, of E.R., of Eli Stone, of How to Get Away with Murder, and on Grey's Anatomy. Did you and Sarah ever act together?
We didn't.
We didn't.
No.
We got to fix that. In 2005, Alexandra appeared on season two of How to Get Away with Murder as Professor Jules Hartford. She's been living with HIV since 1994 and has been a fierce and outspoken advocate for HIV health initiatives as well as trans issues and trans rights. She's been living with HIV since 1994 and has been a fierce and outspoken advocate She's been outspoken about her status in a number of interviews and on speaking tours, giving voice and giving a human face and a heart. In the early 1980s, she worked under the stage name Shontay at the famed Baton Show Lounge in Chicago, Illinois. She won a series of beauty contests. She was named Miss Wisconsin, Miss New York, Miss Chicago, Miss Illinois, and Miss Florida.
Stop.
Wisconsin, New York, Illinois, Florida. If those came with electoral votes, you would be president.
You're right.
She also served as a judge of the Miss Continental Pageant in 2000 and 2011. Her music has been up for Grammy consideration. She moderated a panel at the White House just this year, which certainly qualifies as an act of bravery. She has been an activist bringing increased awareness to HIV/AIDS for a number of years. She is inspiring, she's a hero, she's absolutely dedicated. It's an honor to present her with this award and wish you congratulations.
Thank you. Boy, I should have written something down. This is really something from a little kid from Inglewood, I got to tell you right now. I, uh, I, I am really flabbergasted. I, I, but I do have some things I want to say. I think, I first want to say thank you to the council members and to the mayor and to all of you for being here, all of the humans behind me. This is extraordinary. I love when our tribe gets together. It always makes me happy. I'm 55 years old, so I have lived through revolution before. I remember when Larry Kramer started ACT UP in his living room. And I remember when Tony Kushner was just beginning an idea about a lot of angels that came down to one specific angel named Prior, and this begat probably one of the greatest LGBT pieces of literature in American history. And we're in the center of a revolution right now. We're in the center of what needs not only compassion and kindness, but understanding. We have an amazing president. I adore him. I think he's fantastic. He's great theater. He's hilarious to watch. I just think he's super entertaining. And I think the greatest gift that he's giving us all is the reminder how precious true freedom really is. Now, he's a bit of the absent-minded professor, but it worked for Jerry Lewis, so what the hell? So I want to say to the LGBT community, my tribe, that standing still and being complacent isn't going to work this time. Silence isn't going to work this time. Moving to the side and letting other people take care of each other and take care of their own business and write their checks isn't going to work this time. What's going to work is footwork, and what's going to work is highly motivated, specific revolutionary acts. And I mean this in the most purest sense. And I think that we really need to take some time and look at each other in the face and recognize each other. I'm a trans person of color. I'm an ex-sex worker. I spent time being homeless on the streets of Chicago for a year and a half of my life, begging for change and eating out of the dumpsters of Burger Kings. So I know what it's like to have nothing. Nothing. Absolutely nothing. And now I'm on a TV show. It makes absolutely no sense. And I only say that because I understand what gifts truly are and how divine they are, how inspired they can be, and how truly humbled and grateful I am for the gifts that others have given me. I look people in the face now, and I look at them through my trans lens. I teach this younger generation, you guys. I teach this younger generation. They are not lazy, they are not stupid, and they are not ill-informed. They are imaginative, bright, intelligent, funny, compassionate, kind, superhumans that will change this world, and they're listening. They can hear you. I stand here a trans person of color, and I carry my history with me. I carry all of my brothers and sisters from the past with me, so I don't stand alone. And there are many, many voices that were silenced in the 80s and continue to be silenced. The suicide rate of the transgender youth is 62%. And when we kill ourselves, we throw ourselves off bridges, we hang ourselves in closets, and we shoot ourselves in the head. We're dying, ladies and gentlemen, and we need your help. We do not need you to speak for us, we need you to speak with us. I've run into many people in my life who have said to me many, many times, "Well, I don't see color." I've heard that many times. "Well, I don't see, I don't see race." And here's what they mean. They see everyone as white. That's what they mean. I have run across people many times in my life who have said, "Well, I don't see transgender, and I don't see LGBT, I don't see it." I see you as a human being. Well, if you don't see my transness, then you don't see me. I've worked too hard and too long. It's not a choice I made, my transness, just like my color is not a choice I made. It is something I was born with and something I carry proudly. I met a human being in 1976, and she changed my life. We were both cast in Twelfth Night by William Shakespeare. I played Sebastian, she played Viola, and we fell in love. And we were married in 1995. She's my wife of over 20 years and my best friend and my confidant and my guardian of over 40. I owe her my life. She's my teacher. She's my best friend. She's my lover. She's my confidant. And she calls me on my shit. And it's good to have those kind of people keep you in line, especially with me, with my own ego, so... I owe my life to my wife Chrissann. And I want to thank the mayor, and I also want to thank... I keep looking down, hoping there's words for me to say, but they're sadas, and I don't think I should repeat her speech. And I want to thank the council members, and I want to leave you with one last thought. This is just a suggestion, you guys. It's just a suggestion, because what do I know? I think if we're able to gather our strength as not only LGBT and Q and gender queer and gender binary human beings, but our allies, gather ourselves together in one big group and reach across, because it's easy to talk to each other now. This is easy. This is easy to do. This is a speech that's easy for us to make, all of us, because we all agree with each other. There's no one here in this room that's thinking, "Oh, my goodness, those people are wrong. Those people should be sent to jail. Those people should be marginalized and ostracized." That's not happening in this room. What's happening in this room is great love and great joy. So this is an easy place, because it's a safe place. Now, we got to get out of this place and go to the unsafe place. We've got to gather ourselves together. We've got to gather ourselves together, and we've got a group. That's revolution, is when we can talk to the people who don't agree with us, who don't understand us, who do want us dead, who do want us marginalized, who believe we should be ostracized, who don't believe in equal rights, who agree that all of us should be rounded up like cattle and taken to an island and put somewhere where they can forget about us. Those are the people that are ill-informed, spiritually bankrupt. We have to help them the best way we can, with education, with compassion, with kindness, and with a revolutionary spirit that bore the LGBTQ community from the beginning of time. We come from revolution. We don't have to drum this up. This is who we are. It's in our cells. It's in our spirit. It's in our molecules. It's in our footsteps. It's in what we write, how we sing, how we draw, how we paint, how we speak. You would not have art if it were not for the queer community. So we know how to do that. We can create revolution. Let's go out and change the world. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandra. Last but not least, the handsome youthful man to my right, Alexei Romanov. Alexei was born in the Ukraine, coming to the United States during World War II. Alexei was active in the gay community since the 1950s, first in New York City and then in Los Angeles, where he moved in 1958. Alexei became involved in the gay rights movement in LA in the 1960s. He helped organize and attended the first mass protest against police raids on gay bars in the United States in February of 1967 at the Black Cat Tavern. He co-founded the Santa Monica Bay Coalition for Human Rights in the 1970s in response to the Anita Bryant-Briggs push for discrimination. As HIV hit the community, Alexei fought for funding for research and demonstrated for the rights of those affected by AIDS. Alexei has marched in every Christopher Street West Pride Parade since the first one and has been an honoree of LA Pride in 2008, getting the founding father award. He was awarded again in 2014. Alexei will be marching with us in resistance on June 11th. At the age of 80, Alexei Romanov continues to participate fully in the LGBTQ community, serving as an example to younger generations. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you our hero, Alexei Romanov.
Hi, I'm Alexei Romanov, and I am very happy to be here. And how do I follow all these others who have done so much for our community? So I'll just give you who I am and what I am and how I believe, and I hope this gets to some young people. Hello, family, because you all are my family. No matter what color, no matter what ethnic background, no matter what race, no matter whether you're brown, black, yellow, or white, you're part of our flag. You know, I look at the colors here, I look at the celebrations. We didn't celebrate when we started this. I often say to the younger people that I get to speak to, "No one has ever given us anything we haven't had to fight for. And if you don't use it, you'll lose it!" Thank you, city council, because I can remember when Morris Kite came to talk before you, and I was with him. Soon as that finger went up and was pointing, we were asked to leave. It's a whole different world now. I stand here talking to you as an equal, talking to you as a brother, talking to you as someone who cares about your community, even if it isn't mine. I helped with the great boycott, not because I was affected by it, but I saw other human beings affected by it. And I so respect the people who stand up and speak out, and when you hear somebody saying something racist or ethnic differences and talking about them as less than, don't you let them get away with it. Say something. Stand up for what you believe. Stand up for who you are. Stand up for what you can do, because you can change this world. I know. I'm 80 years old, and I'm still going to go on, and I'm still going to do what I have to do to keep my life, my family, my husband, and all of you feeling good about yourself. Thank you all for being here. I've seen other administrations that were just as deadly to us in the gay community, but this isn't only about the gay community. All lives matter, every one of them. And when you're there, soon as you hear something that's ethnically disgusting, don't let them get away with it. The only way is not to say anything. There was an old saying. When the Nazis came, they took the gays away. They took the Jews away. And I said nothing. But when they came for me, there was nobody to say anything. Keep saying it. You need to do that. Don't let people make these jokes about different communities. You have to understand, we're here for everybody. I know what oppression was like. I have felt it. I knew what it was like to have to hide who I was a good part of the early part of my life. But you know, there was a mentor in my life, and I'm not going to tell you the whole story. I'm just going to say, there was a man named Mother Bryan. At that time, he was 86 years old. We were a little group of eight of us who used to hang out at Bryan Park in New York. We called him Mother Bryan as a word of endearment, not of sickness or anything like that. And he would come there and tell us... and by the way, he doesn't seem as old to me as he did then. And he would come and tell us what it was like in 1890, when he was 20 years old, to be a gay man, and that the police didn't want to put him in jail. They wanted to beat him every day till he left that town and went to someplace that was safe for him. Well, this is one of the places that would have been safe for him, and so would the people of this city, and so would be the people of New York and other places that give haven to us and don't judge us by who we love, by what we are. Thank you. It's not over yet!
I think it's all been said. So I'd like to welcome someone that we get the great privilege of participating with to put this on every year, and that is our out-open, proud general manager of the Department of Cultural Affairs, Danielle Brazel. Danielle?
Ah, my heart is so full. This is such an extraordinary celebration and acknowledgement of a marked moment. This is what we do when we talk about race, sexual orientation, gender, identity. And we do it in the official house of our city. This is incredible. Congratulations to the honorees. You are phenomenal, and I stand on the shoulders of your giant, of your titan-ness. I, um, I never was in the closet. I just didn't know. But I knew I was creative, and I knew I wanted to make art. And so I found my way into the small spaces in Los Angeles, the 99-seat theaters, the performance spaces. And I learned not only how to be an artist, how to learn to walk and talk and share my ideas, but I also learned who I was inside. And so for people behind me that are trailing these, that are blazing these trails, I thank you. We have an extraordinary heritage guide for you today that I hope that each one of our city family members takes a look, participates in one of the dialogues that we have, because this is how we have a conversation. And every year, it is our deep, deep pleasure of being able to honor artists and creative voices in our city through our grant-making, through our individual COLA fellowships. And you, city council, support the Department of Cultural Affairs with over $10.5 million in funding each and every year that goes out into the community and makes sure that our community... our community creative voices are heard, so we thank you. We also have an artist and a cover artist who every year is featured on this, and this year's artist is Mr. Hector Silva, and I would like to invite Mr. Hector Silva up to the podium so that we can unveil. So shall we unveil?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Danielle. So before we unveil, just a few quick announcements. One Archives is putting on an exhibition in the Bridge Gallery, which I believe begins next week. We also have the Civil Rights Movement, I don't know what that is. Oh, the theme is "The Silver Rights Movement at the Black Cat." We have the Resist March on June 11th. And?
And for the second year, Venice now has its own LGBT Pride. Tomorrow, we will be unveiling, with Supervisor Sheila Kuhl at 10:00 AM, a rainbow-colored lifeguard tower at a new Bill Rosendahl memorial stretch of the beach. And on Friday night, we will be lighting the iconic Venice sign in rainbow colors with a party and a celebration at Windward Avenue.
Fantastic. So look on the LA Pride website for a whole month-long series of events, including an exhibit at the Hollywood Museum, reel-to-reel, gays and lesbians in Hollywood. Lots of things, the entire month of June, and as has been said, we should all be out, proud, present, participate, and speak up.
So before you unveil, Mr. Corret?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge everyone on this great day and how much progress we've made, certainly in my lifetime. I know as a high school student, I felt terribly because I saw some of my gay classmates being mistreated, not particularly worse than probably at every other high school, but enough that made me uncomfortable, and the fact that I didn't know how to respond. And there were no role models for supporting the LGBT community. There really weren't a lot of role models for gay and lesbian youth. There weren't elected officials. There weren't people in the entertainment industry that were out. So I joined the Stonewall Democratic Club when it was founded in 1975, so that I would have someplace that would help me in activism be supportive. And I've had the honor of having many opportunities. I ran the campaign for Valerie Torino, the first open lesbian mayor of an American city when she was elected in 1984 to be mayor of West Hollywood. I wrote the first anti-discrimination legislation relating to transgender individuals banning discrimination in healthcare in the state of California 12 years ago. And I've had many other opportunities. But we've made a lot of progress in LA City, certainly a lot of progress in California, but we've been up and down in the rest of the country, and in fact, horrible steps back are happening in some places in the world, certainly in Chechnya, where I never imagined, having learned in my history books, that many hundreds of thousands of gays and lesbians were killed during World War II in the concentration camps, along with 6 million Jews, many of which were members of my family, that over 70 years later, we'd see it happening again with actual concentration camps. And something that we all have to make everyone aware of and do everything we can to fight back, or it will continue. I think we've made a lot of progress. It's amazing, all the role models we have now, especially in the city of Los Angeles right up in front of us, and hopefully you'll be role models to tens of thousands of younger folks growing up here in the city of Los Angeles. So I thank all of you for everything that you're doing, and we will continue to work with you and fight with you and push back against what's happening coming out of this White House.
Mr. Harris-Darson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you, our colleagues, Mr. Bonin and Mr. O'Farrell, for a beautiful celebration this morning. Happy to be joined by your honorees and the citywide leaders. Truly a moving day. I appreciate and again want to thank you all for leading out with struggle, leading out with our pushback to create the kind of community where we can all live, we can all thrive, and we can all realize our greatest potentials, and so we're grateful to you for that. I want to take a little bit of privilege, because I was at the unveiling of the press conference unveiling the homeless count numbers this morning, which has a serious intersection with the LGBT community. So I was not able to acknowledge our 8th District Honoree, the one and only Jasmine Cannon, who I'll ask to stand. We'll ask you to give her a big round of applause. She is a journalist, an activist, recognized all over the country, recognized as one of the most influential Angelenos under the age of 40, someone who navigates the intersections of race, of class, of gender, and of sexuality in a way that we can all look to as a great example. And so we're very, very thankful to Jasmine. And then also, on June 9th at 6:00 PM at Division Theater in La Mertre Park, we're proud, a couple of us, Council President Weston and I, will have in South LA our Pride Day at Division Theater. We'll be showing... At La Mertre Park in the cultural center of the African-American community in Los Angeles, we'll be showing Moonlight, the movie. We'll be having a discussion, and we'll be having with some folks from the film and some leadership in our community. So we invite you all there and definitely want it to be a part of the round of celebrations that we'll have in the city of LA. Thank you all.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Bonin, and Mr. O'Farrell. Where we were at last year during this Pride celebration was very different from where we are today, and I was very overcome with emotion with hearing you speak, particularly Mr. Bonin with your words. And all I can say is, as a mom, all we can do is raise children who are understanding, who know how to love, who understand compassion and kindness, and I think that's what I'm left with after hearing all of you speak so eloquently, is about what I can contribute to society. And I've said this before to my brothers and sisters in the LGBT community, children are not born to hate anyone, and children are not born to discriminate. Children are taught these things, and as parents, we need to do a better job. It breaks my heart every time I have to explain to my Izzy what is coming out of the White House. The hate, the discrimination, how do you explain that to kids in kindergarten and second graders? You can't. So all I can do is teach my kid how to be understanding, compassionate, and how to love her brothers and sisters. And I have to believe that the next generation after ours will be able to repair all the hate that's coming out of the White House. So congratulations to you both. I am so honored to serve with both of you every single day. I also want to introduce my honoree, DJ Les Ortiz from the San Fernando Valley. I am so proud of you, girl. She is going to be headlining our LGBT concert on June 17th in Van Nuys, the very first LGBT concert in the San Fernando Valley. We need to be able to bring our community together and lead in a way where our families understand that there is a place for them to come and share their struggles with other people that look just like them. And so by doing that in the valley, I think it brings out the talent, such as our DJ Les Ortiz, but also other families in our communities who don't understand what is happening sometimes, and that we haven't built that infrastructure for them to be able to share some of what they're going through. So I think it's important. Thank you very much for being here. Congratulations to all of you, and let's continue to fight, fight the resistance and make sure that we do it the right way by teaching our kids that there is love and compassion in all of us. Thank you very much.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just so excited, so honored to be on a council that's not afraid to celebrate the diversity and the uniqueness amongst us. This LGBT Heritage Month celebration has really, I think, underscored the importance of working together and collaborating. And so to all of the awardees here this morning, I just want to say thank you. Earlier today, we had an opportunity to recognize individuals in the rotunda, and so I'm just happy to celebrate Jasmine and Phil, and my honoree, Jim Manja from the Wellness Center. And Jim has been doing an extraordinary job as president and CEO of the St. John's Well and Child and Family Center, and has been a real leader in encouraging community health throughout, not just the 9th District, but our city as well. So I just want to say thank you to all of you who are making a real difference, and everybody can make a difference, but we have to work together. And so we celebrate you, we love you, we appreciate you. Keep up the good work, continued success, and we are all in this together. Let's do it. Thank you.
So Mitch, before anybody else gets on the queue, I want to congratulate you and might say, "Job well done." Back to you. Unveil, unveil, unveil.
And before we unveil, let's head over there, but before we do, I want to call out my team of professionals that made today happen, and that is Tony Aronaga. Dave Conno. Dave Conno. William Ayala. Dan Halden, who greeted us with his piano playing. Star Parsimian. And my entire team helped make this happen, working with Mike Bonin's staff and Mayoral's staff. So congratulations, everyone. Thank you. Let's unveil the calendar.
Now, let's go to Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, you have items 1A, 2B, 4C, 5C, 6C, 7C, 8C, 9C, 10C, 13C, 33C, 34C, 35C, 36C, 37C, 48C, 49. Let's go, Mr. Herman.
Can we call the order, Mr. Chair? Can we get some order? All this noise, and you want me to speak over the noise?
Mr. Herman, do you want to speak? Then go ahead. I gave you your items.
So what the fuck is affordable housing? Even the woman speaker was saying she was homeless, just like me from 2008. What pathway to Metro? There's no fucking pathway to Metro other than to finance affordable housing. Item 49, rookie. And then we go to the pure evil. Pure evil on item 51. Trip and fall. Trip and fall. But your MOU is TRO and Threat Management Unit under the matter that arises from alleged trip and fall incidents, which occurred on October 13. My fucking favorite number, regarding Ventura Boulevard versus the city of Los Angeles. Pure fucking evil. And then we got item 51, 53, 54, all allegations of police brutality and abuse. Stop fucking with these settlements and pay up LAPD. Then I go into item 49. No, 48, the robberies, more pure evil. It's all pure evil, robberies throughout the city of Los Angeles, and we lost the Olympics to 2024. You know why? Because nobody wants to fucking die and get robbed. Just this morning, a woman, 80-year-old, got slapped by an African-American teenager and a white boy. She was being robbed. More robberies in California than any other fucking state because there's no fucking jobs. Yet we had this two-hour, three-hour fucking presentation while people are being robbed. Pure fucking evil. Again, Weezer and Martinez, Relative Offer Reward, $15,000 for information? No. Fuck you. Snitches get stitches, and I'm not gonna snitch on no fucking robbery and no fucking heterosexual and no homosexuals, because it is pure evil, these robberies, to provide a reward for 15 measly fucking dollars, and for what? Apprehension and conviction? You never post them. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org is right. Post the fucking robberies.
Okay, give him his general comment, minute.
So yeah, it is a good day. It is a good day that we put pee in a privilege for pussy and for the oppression that all the transgenders go through.
Even myself, I'm transgender, and no one knows about it, but look at... Even myself, I'm transgender, and no one knows about it, but look at me, folks. Look at me, I'm parading here with the rest of the folks. Yeah, we're all about gay parades and so forth. So if Ron Galbraith can speak like this, why can't I? After all, I'm disabled, and I have a transgender attitude. I respect transgender, because when I used to hide in the closet as the Dark Knight, or AKA Robin Hood, I used to wear my hood. But now that Hugo Rossiter sits back there checking on my ass, I'm going public. I'm going public.
Stop, Hugo Rossiter. Stop the TMUs and the TROs.
Mr. Spindler. Items 1A, B, C, D, E, H, and I, K, M, O, Q, R. Item 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10.
Basically all of them, yeah. We can, yeah, okay. So now, let's get to the closed session items. Yay, money. Number 54, that's about my lawsuits. Yay. So you're going to talk in closed session about my million-dollar claim against Mike Fuer, my illegal prosecution in Van Nuys, your lawsuit, and the one...
Stay on topic, Mr. Spindler, please.
Number 54, the City Council shall recess in closed session. You don't know necessarily all the details of evil. So 53, Samuel Calhoun Arrington? Yes, I went to the meeting, and Paul Krikorian went like this. They didn't have a quota in the budget and finance. Therefore, we can speak. Thank you, that is the Brown Act, you are complying. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Samuel Arrington had his head bashed in by the LAPD in 2011, and they stapled the back of his brain. And then in 2015, they assaulted him on Venice Beach. This time, they fucking got it on camera. Eight million-dollar settlement, yes, on number 53. Then, Pina versus City of Los Angeles, 52. You talk about rights, transgender rights, you talk about rights. When is the LAPD going to stop beating and illegally arresting people who are black? Let's start with that shit first. Because you don't start at Pina versus City of LA. Has to sue four years waiting for a settlement. Now we're going to get settlement. Then 55, pending litigation, yes, Proposition 26. Oh, yes, Mr. Pickle is in the house. Hello, Mr. Pickle, from the DWP, to talk about 55. This is the transfers. Can you transfer, well, excuse me...
Steal...
$230 million a year from the DWP to give to yourselves?
No.
No! And that's the issue. Remember, Herbie? Remember why you arrested me last year, talking about that proposition? You didn't get passed.
Why don't you stay on the subject? In fact, let's go to his general public comment. Okay, go to his general public comment. Okay, go ahead.
So, now, May 26, Monica Rodriguez certified the winner of the election of CD7. Look on the city's website, the city clerk has certified her victory. Congratulations. In fact, she won mighty handily, by about 700, 800 votes. Where is she? So we had a deal. Marquis Aristosson said she can't be seated early unless the election is certified. Okay, it's certified. And you gave your word, Mr. President, that you would seat the winner early, to begin the work now. You lied. She's not here. So why isn't Monica Rodriguez sworn in? There's her empty chair there. Let's get her seated Friday in Van Nuys. Let's swear her in and get her to work in the Seventh District. Please, Nury, talk to him and make him keep his promise.
Thank you, your time has expired. General public comment.
Please deport all the goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers. They have destroyed the city of Los Angeles, as well as America. God bless Donald Trump. Yesterday, I had an incident with two police officers that came out between 6:32 PM and 6:48 PM. That was yesterday, May 30, 2017. They were Officer Female Navarro and Officer Coller. And female Officer Navarro and Coller were from the Southeast Division. Now Officer Female Navarro was, is a lesbo, gay, and rude, nasty, condescending, lesbo bitch, who didn't give me the time nor the courtesy, nor would talk to me. She basically took the side of the honky, who filed a false charge against me at South Los Angeles. And Officer Coller, the tall honky, he took sides with her, and basically both threatened to arrest me on what charges? There was no crime. So I told Navarro, "I will go to City Hall tomorrow and accuse you, you goddamn lesbo bitch."
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Your time's expired. Okay, do we have a, do we have any other general public? Do we have a Joe Jimenez? Okay, that closes general public comment. Okay, Mr. Clerk, you want to take care of the ordinances? And I think we can do that by voting through items, on items 2 through 10, or am I wrong?
Those are the ordinances in the first section, sir. Available in the first section, we could do items 2 through 10 and 13, if you'd like.
Let's do that. So, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And, Mr. President, to satisfy your desire to get rid of the ordinances, or to vote on them, rather, we could take items 33 through 37, as well as 42 through 49. Again, those would be items 30...
Let's do those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Go to item 1. Do we have a Mr. Nassar, Jack Nassar? Please come forward. Sergeants, let him through.
Yes, sir. I was, I had put up a banner on my own building, for my own product. Temporary banner. I received a call from a city inspector, asking me to remove the banner, within 30 days. I asked the inspector that I would need a, how would I apply for an extension, because I needed to set up time to have the banner removed. He said by simply asking at this moment, on this phone call, which is what I did. I then had the banner removed, in a time, within that timeframe, and now I have the city of Los Angeles trying to charge me $1,250 for three inspections, that I don't understand. On my own property, my own banner, I can walk up and down the block, and take 100 photos of 100 banners, all illegal, and it could probably drive this inspection team nuts, handling this type of stuff. So here I am, trying to talk to the inspectors, which is difficult to do, because if you're not up at 7:00 in the morning, and you have a 15-minute window to be able to talk to them, it's in...
Thank you, thank you. Let me defer to Mr. Krikorian. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the first time that I've heard about this case, so I'd like to, if we can, continue it for 30 days, so I'd have an opportunity to discuss this with the gentleman.
Okay, so, Mr. Nassar, what we're going to do, we're going to continue this item for 30 days, which means this council will hear it again on June 30, which will give you ample time to have a conversation with the representatives of Council District 2, Mr. Krikorian. So that item has been canceled, I mean, has been, has been continued for 30 days.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And, Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety has recommended that items 1D, 1I, and 1M also be continued for 30 days to June 30.
Okay, so ordered. So now, let's vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Okay, now, if I remember correctly, Mr. Krikorian indicated at the start of today that items 50, 51, and 52, we could deal with in open session, so, Mr. Clerk, if you would read those items.
Very good, sir. For item 50, in the case entitled De Alfer Jr. versus LAPD Chief Beck et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $500,000 in settlement. For item 51, in the case entitled Prokakary versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $300,000 in settlement. And for item 52, in the case entitled Sergio Pena versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend up to $500,000 in settlement, made payable in fiscal years 2016, 17, and 2017, 18.
Hey, thank you. Let's then, members, prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, sergeants, we're going to go into closed session, so if you could clear the council chambers, please clear the council chambers. So, at this point in time...
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
5859, Kia 5060, watch three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violent traffic accidents and are up to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You'll be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as parole beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian of someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Say better and well, we begin with an Eyewitness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation, and we're just not gonna tolerate it.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used, and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people, as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong, and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail, and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Say better and well, we begin with an Eyewitness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation, and we're just not gonna tolerate it.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used, and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people, as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong, and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail, and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
5859, I can't see if 5060 watch three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10pm until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violent traffic accidents and we have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as parole beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian of someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Stay better and well, we begin with an Eyewitness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation and we're just not going to tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gays or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is life, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not, but it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violent traffic accidents and we have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as parole beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian of someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were...
So it's kind of a shame we win that one and then we fight the good fight and win it and then not only does West Hollywood rescind it, but now we have to rescind it.
And for the...
Okay, we're back in open session, Mr. City Attorney.
For the record, there were no reportable actions coming out of closed.
Okay, then, Mr. Clerk, what's before this body?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 20.
Okay, let's prepare members to vote on item number 20. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, now, what's before this body?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted, they're referred. Announcements, members, if all would please rise for adjourning motions. All please rise, I'm looking to my left side. All would please rise. Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today's council meeting in memory of Pasquale Recupero, a dear family friend of ours. He passed away on May 28th at home peacefully surrounded by his loving wife. Pasquale was born on December 9th, 1945 in Scugliti, Sicily, and was a resident of San Pedro for over 38 years, worked for State Fish for over 30 years. In his spare time, he enjoyed fishing and hunting and always visiting the racetrack when he could. His prized possession, though, was his entire family and spending as much time as possible with them. Pasquale will be deeply missed by his loving family, including his wife of 47 years, Maria, his children Sally, his daughter Filomena, who's a childhood friend of mine, and Gaetano, his son, grandchildren, and many nieces, nephews, and cousins. Visitation will be held tomorrow, Thursday, 4 to 7, followed by vigil service at McNerney's. Funeral mass will be offered this Friday at Mary Star of the Sea Church, 10:30, followed by and two minute Green Hills Memorial Park. And in lieu of flowers, donations can be made to the American Cancer Society or Children's Hospital, Los Angeles, to the Recupero family. Our hearts and prayers are with the entire family and Pasquale will definitely be missed in our town. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Buscagno. So I'm still looking to my left. Now I'm moving to my right side, Mr. Kocorian's side. I don't see any other adjourning motions. Members, this council meeting is adjourned.